I moved that the community complaint, um, community planning commission vote to accept the minutes dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty four as written.
Okay.
Eric, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. She carries next one.
I move the community planning commission vote to accept the minutes dated May twenty first, twenty twenty four as written.
Second.
All right, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Quick question, is Ryan's not on, right?
He's not on.
Um, right, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, just make sure, otherwise we got, you know.
Okay, last one.
Uh, I moved that the community planning commission vote to accept the minutes dated June.
Fourth.
Fourth?
Not the forty fifth.
See that. June fourth, twenty twenty four as written.
Second.
Our motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Oh, yeah.
Motion carries, so we have a meeting minutes, second carry.
I just wanted to add a little, you know, much of me.
Yeah.
The agenda has it right. That's all.
I figured it was a new calendar that we didn't know about yet.
I'm trying to add one more time to the year.
Forty five days in a month, yeah.
Uh, Daniel, a little guidance where this took filler, you know, for pillars before, what some, you, you want to talk about any of the, say, non-project ones? Or should we do Deerfield?
In my opinion, I would go ahead and leave my feeling.
Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward. Right?
Yeah.
No? Well.
Well, straightforward or not, I underhand.
Straightforward or not.
Because there are some.
Yeah, okay.
Um. The, the workshop is probably a longer session, um, we can retain communities, I don't know if it will be a shorter one yet.
Right.
And then for seven, same Teresa, we probably want to give ourselves a, a good F L for them.
Yeah, I agree on that one.
Yeah, um.
So why don't we do Deerfield place then?
Sure, oh, and I guess I should say before we, um, for the stormwater and subdivision rigs, the town engineer needed a little bit more time to familiarize themselves with the requirements. So, um, I prefer to take that up if enough is back, that's okay.
Okay.
To weigh in.
Okay. All right, so do we have the, uh, here or?
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Bruno is here, he's the, uh, developer of Charles Street. Um, it kind of just recently came to our attention that they were gonna, you know, we're, we're approaching the end of the work on that subdivision. And, um, it, I think it's brought to my attention by G M two, um, that who does our peer, or, or our on-call engineering inspections. That, um, the original plans did call for the removal of a cul-de-sac, and it's been in place for a very long time. Um, we understand there are butters who may use the cul-de-sac, it, you know, kind of impacts their property.
Right.
Um, and so the, we just raised the question, if we are going to actually go ahead and remove that, we, we ought to start the conversation with the neighbors. Cause that subdivision was approved in two thousand and six, I mean, it was a long time ago.
Plans are two thousand and one even, right, or two thousand, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it would be unlikely that people who moved to the neighborhood since then would even know that that was being considered. Um, I did reach out to our D P W, um, to ask their opinion on it, their preference, I put some correspondence in there, their, their preference would be to leave it as is. Um, and I did hear from one, a butter, I reached out to both a butter to live along the, um, you know, the direct butters, um, one of them, you know, gave feedback that evidence would be for them to leave it, they, they do need it. So, um, just wanted to, you know, have a discussion about it, um, I haven't really had a chance to speak to the developer about this preference. It's probably a good time, um, if you.
Eric, who, uh, who's the developer?
I'm sorry?
Are you the developer?
Yes.
Okay, just state your name just for the recording.
Michael Bruno.
Hey, Michael, so what's your opinion or what's your, what's your thoughts? I'm hearing a, a lot about just leaving it in place and what's your opinion?
I've been notified by butters that would like to leave it in place, um, more of a community issue. Um. It's been, um. That being point, there's no problem. Uh-huh. Now, at Kansas and Chelsea, it's always true, but I think the same issue does exist. But, um, I'm, I'm open to, to whatever's. Um, provided by the town.
Besides the closing, you know, making a straight line through, what, what kind of restoration happens on both flanks? Or what would be required on both flanks?
Uh, yeah, fine, yeah, we night Charles Street, I'm also the contractor, that's.
Thanks, Dan.
Sure, I just came to help answer these questions, uh. There would be impact to the, to buyers for sure, so, uh, not sure if the butters are here, but, uh. We, we'd have to basically cut out their whole driveways, extend driveways, there's a, in a budding, I don't know if it's a well-laid area, but there is a, um. There is a, I, I guess retention area from either the original development from, uh, Deerfield or, um, what was created when Charles Street went in. So, I, I don't know if there would be any environmental impact, I would probably come with some study, but, um, you know, in, in my opinion, for someone who's doing the work, it's a pretty invasive project, right? Would have to rip all people's front yards, relocate trees, take stuff down, cut outside walks, it's not as simple as just a, um. But, yeah, just a straight road that's, once formerly dirt road, new subdivision, we have to do some, do some work there. Uh, so it's, I don't want to say it's a huge tree project, but it's, uh, invasive enough that it would require a meeting like this to say, what does everybody really want? Cause the plan is old, um, it would probably have to do some drainage work to, to clean that piece up, right? Just to relocate manholes and drainage, so, um, it's a pretty invasive, uh, in, in my opinion, just, uh. Project to, to bring it right up to what plans is, but it's been, like you said, twenty years old, I think the people that live in both those houses weren't there when it was approved. I think they're both newer, uh. Newer people, but from, you know, what I gather from the people on the street that I've talked to, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to create more mess when we're so close to finishing. Uh, the street, making it, making it right, so, you know, my plan would be to basically take the end of the street where it shifts out and just. Take the curb and curb it back into that cul-de-sac to open it up and tie the two together vastly and then just step away.
It, are the two catch basins that they show at the end of the cul, cul-de-sac, like basically forward of the cul-de-sac, are those existing or that's proposed?
Those are existing.
Okay, yeah, so they're kind of placed well.
They are, they're, they're placed very well.
Yeah.
And, uh, one of them actually needs a little bit of work, so my plan would probably, once I.
Which one, the north or the south?
It would be the north, the north one that been caved in a little bit, so we have to fix that anyways.
Yeah.
So my plan would be to kind of just take those two, if we were to do anything at all, would be kind of reposition those, those catch basins right along the curb line to catch any rainwater from there, so.
Yeah, cause they're not really, you know, they weren't designed for that.
Yeah, of course, with town permission to say, hey, does it make sense to move these to, to catch some rainwater? Uh, but that would be, our, our plan would be to just kind of, what's there, you know, I, I, there is some big kind of natural trees that would have to go away, that kind of stinks. Have to cut down people's trees and make their front yards. So, I, I'm not sure how that affects the town, because now what would be town property would become someone's front yard.
Does that work?
It's, so, this is interesting, because I think when this plan was initially approved, Deerfield hadn't been accepted yet as a public way, and it's a couple of by now, so I actually don't know if we really have.
Large, a large right-of-way area than really.
So, yeah, yeah.
I mean, kind of a constructed right-of-way, so it just stays asphalt.
It's a big layout.
Yeah.
Ball with.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a, a fair amount of square footage on either side when you make that road, it's a few thousand square feet on each side, or, or combined, that would become someone's front yard. So, there would probably have to be some conveyance work with the town and, uh, and the property owners to make that right, new engineering, it's a lot of work, just make it what it initially called for. So, General sent them an egg on, on the street, it was like, don't fix what's up, broken. Like, boy.
Yeah, I see too, the grades pick up from one seventy-eight and basically just go west into that double cage, catch basin up about like three hundred feet up.
Yeah.
So, it's not like any, there's no, uh, you know, easterly flow back to these, these original ones that dumped down into that basin. I think you have them showing going down to a south basin here.
Yeah, everything that's in that, um, cul-de-sac right now is caught by those two.
Yep.
And everything from that, that street line down towards Charles Street is picked up by two other catch basins.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of why we're here to go, because there's some water issues when it's undeveloped, we want to, really want to fix that, like expressed, sort of fix it, we, we want to get that done for the neighbors. But, uh, this just kind of came up, so what we do here, what's in the best interest of the town is the town want, so try to keep that part of this out.
And they. Is anybody else in the audience or on, is there anyone else online? Any names, uh?
There is, um, one person online, uh, Mary, who knows iPhone, I don't know if they're good for this project or.
Well, yeah.
Oh, and, uh, good job, Mary. Um, yeah, if there's, if there's no one else in the audience, uh, just bring it back to the, uh, commissioner, Mark. Your thoughts, you, you have a lot of history and you know, I saw your signature on the original plans there too, which, not that long ago for you.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's a, it is, it is a bit of work and, and, uh, um. And, and I really, I would really defer to the, to the neighbors on either side, because aside from the fact that you add a bunch of land to them, which probably changes their valuations, something they don't necessarily care to have. Um, and a bunch of, uh, uh, yard maintenance that would have to go, that they would have to take over doing, cause somebody's going to maintain that area. Um, and then the longer driveways, I, 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 I think probably, if they think that they'd like to keep it the way it is, that's fine. Cause it also is kind of an area where they can, kids can play, it's pretty safe, you know? Yeah, um. I, I, I know I read in our, that there was thoughts about putting another cul-de-sac there, um, at the end of Charles Street, instead of having a cul-de-sacs back to back. But I don't think that's probably the greatest idea, but, um.
Amazon loves it.
Yeah.
Turn around, yeah, I, I tell you, everyone comes through and they say, can I turn around and pass, sure can.
Yeah.
Which actually, it works out pretty well on the street, because sometimes people get a big delivery or a truck comes through and they have to cut through, uh, and they can't turn around, it's pay to the neck for them. So, but I've used it a hundred times, like leave my house, forget my wallet, and I say, oh, well, I'm not turning in someone's driveway, I just break it around.
Yeah.
There's no impact to anyone, so that's somewhat of a benefit, but you have one of those in the middle of the street, people aren't falling into people's driveways.
So, so historically, historically, we've actually done this a few times, where we've taken the cul-de-sacs out, but, um. Um, but, but it was fairly recent, I mean, in, in other words, when, I think Old Coach was one of the best examples, there was two of them there that we ended up taking out and running them through and putting the, uh, grass back. Uh, but, but those were done fairly soon after the whole approval of it, then in other words, there wasn't a long-term wait. And so that people knew what was happening, the people, same people that were there when you did it, were the people that were there when the, when the vote was taken or when the plan was approved, so. So, um, so again, I, I would, uh, I basically defer, if they want to leave it that way, I don't see any harm in it, um, um, and the only. Long-term harm, if you want to look at it, would be if it started to fall apart and we had to repave it, you know? The town had to repave it, because right now it belongs to the town.
With the curving on it right now.
It's great, great, yeah. It's a good solid.
Good.
It's such a good solid something, it's a good solid cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and I've, I've walked that cul-de-sac a bunch of times, just measuring, it's in really good shape, there's no issue with every nation of the curving or the asphalt, so.
Yeah.
To go in and be written on something that works perfectly fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the others here, Jeff, Max, yes?
I noticed that, um, there were three attached letters. Um, from, I don't know, Amit, Carl, Ronnie, Chris Demming, and Dan O'Donnell.
Chris works for the town.
Chris's town, yeah, and the other was one of the butters or, you know, people up the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I'm sure for one, he lives on, uh, one of the two homes adjacent to the cul-de-sac, um, and Dan O'Donnell's the town engineer.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, Joe Perici is the town.
Oh, yeah, I see that with Joe, okay, so then.
Okay, well, that person is not here, I guess, well.
Max, anything, you, you have any issues or?
No, I know the street, and I think the idea proposed, just connecting the road to it, maybe the cul-de-sac makes perfect sense.
I think probably, um, suggestion you made about, what, you know, blending it in a little, rather than just a cutoff, you know, getting a little blend in, it's a probably.
Yeah, so we have already, we ordered curb already for the street, and I had ordered a big, uh, basically an eight-foot radius.
Yeah.
Ties Charles Street into the cul-de-sac, my concern was that people, if we do do that, they come through, there's a sharp edge where people could get hurt or, or foul hit. So I wanted to make a nice gentle turn in, so it looked nice, uh, so that was my plan there, right? We haven't ordered that piece yet, because we wanted to see how this went.
So I liked that idea when you said it, so.
Yeah, yeah, we planned them in, make them look nice.
Okay.
So, uh, Daniel, I think I agree with you, based on like the comments and even from us, um, but just a minor, right? We can end it that way.
I would recommend handling it as a minor modification, um, there are a few ways we could handle it, we could do it fully, fully carrying, we do the minor modification, and we could handle it just as field change and ask for it to be reflected accurately on the as-built. Um, it, it seems to me that probably taking a vote to formally approve it would make the most sense, so maybe we just do a minor modification, and I created a mo, a motion for that, because I wasn't sure what, which way.
Also, are you still in a way waiting just to confirm any stormwater, I mean, it looks like everything lines up, I mean, but.
I did ask D M two to let us know if they're, if they would.
And they could catch something that we're not, just so it could be added to the condition, if you will, but, um, I think we're generally, you know, on board with it. So, i- it starts giving you the impression, so you know where we're leaning, and we just want to wait for the peer to come back.
Yeah, so even with the end of the curb there, I could leave those couple pieces out, um, until we had a formal decision. Uh, it would be my intent, even if we had to pull on a layer of time, once we're, curb will go in, the twenty-ninth, we're gonna start.
Twenty-ninth?
Yeah, so we have it probably another week there.
I should be able to get some.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to work with that schedule, so we don't hold you up, you know, so you, do you have, uh, paving even scheduled and all that too?
Paving, no, uh, paving's kind of just a full call, but the curving, you have to kind of look.
Yeah.
So, then delivery, it's a lot of curves.
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand pounds.
Yeah.
It's big.
You're not suing it, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, you're doing it?
Yeah.
All right, usually it's like one or two companies that do all the curving, so.
Yeah, well, we're the general, so we, you have our people that come in to do it, we get the excavation and all the paving, isn't it?
Problem.
Herb centers, but, uh, you know, our, our intent there was to just, depending on what the town says, if, if there's no issue with soil water, because where those two catch bases are, are really the only area of contention, if we're gonna leave it, to make sure that those are set. Where water comes down the cul-de-sac to make sure that it picks up stormwater, so they're not just sitting in a strange place.
It doesn't add, it doesn't add to the drainage calculations on your existing extension road there.
Uh, no, no, our, our drainage.
I mean, that's why you want to do, you want to make sure it doesn't.
Right, of course, yeah, so, again, whatever the, the town thing is. Yeah, you know, you know, get them as close as we can, you know, without disturbing what's already there.
Yeah.
We have some.
You're basically just from that radius line, you gotta take it forward to the, the news station, so, I mean.
And to be honest, anything we do there is an improvement, because right now, everything just kind of drains out and makes a mess, so even if we were to just leave them where they're at. Excuse me, and just put curve in, the water's gonna follow that curve line, there's two catch bases right downstream of that, that will pick up whatever was missed by those first two. But right now, we're just going to pick yards and dirt and creating a mess, so, a- any curb installed right now is, is an improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't need to this, I'll follow up with G M two on their recommendation for anything that needs to be done with the drainage, um. Probably will make sense for the plan to just be, um, altered to show change, and then once we have that plan, we can, uh, put minor modifications back on the agenda and have the vote then, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Uh. Yeah, so we just go back to Hayes Engineering, and we, we would have them add that, that radius.
Just a radius.
Plan that shows what we're gonna do and how everything stays, and that would be, I assume, you would need that for your next vote, right? And then.
Which is when we.
Our next meeting is August, uh, sixth, but if we want to, I mean. I, I don't know if we can fill that, but we.
Do you want to do, um, I'm just trying to be creative here to help them, because again, I, I think we're all in favor, but can we do a vote, um, with conditions, you know, just to do, so.
Sure.
So the condition though would be the peer, you know, the changes of plans, whatever, so then that could be done administratively with you.
That's fine.
Is that good?
Yeah.
All right, so do we have a motion or anything, you know? Do you want to just re, re-line, yeah, come up on and move that?
Yeah, I would say I move that the C P C vote to, um, approval minor modification for the, um, Charles Street Extension Subdivision, um. To leave the cul-de-sac in place, um, the conditions would be, um, that it would be subject to, um, the town's engineering peer reviewer and town engineer. Um, approving any, uh, additional drainage measures that would need to be taken, um, and then a revised plan would be submitted, uh, to the C P C for review and approval.
Okay, I'll second it.
Or maybe say so, I shouldn't make the motion.
Yeah. Okay, well, then you know, also move, then then somebody else can say.
Sure, I'll say.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed, motion carries.
Yep.
Appreciate you coming down tonight. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is, are we aging or are getting votes? Eight minutes.
Point of order. I'm, I'm, so new old business that I like to bring up, and it shouldn't take very long, because there's no discussion yet, so if I can do that before eight, would that be allowed?
Sure, just state your name and we'll see if it is, hopefully it is, I don't want to go too far over.
My name is Jack Southern, I'm at ten Winterberry Lane.
What was your last?
John Southern.
Someone?
John.
Okay.
So, John's, um, ten Winterberry Lane, um, off of Central Street, so I wanted to bring up, uh, I don't know if this is old business or new business, but I wanted to revisit the project of putting a sidewalk on Central Street. Um, I spoke with Danielle at the town meeting, and she asked if we could get together a group, there's actually a Facebook group that is already quite active, and of the folks I talked about it in the, um, Spruce Patriot area, and the. Winterberry butters, the ones I've spoken with are very for it, even the folks that are on Central, because they would love to be able to walk to their neighbors as well. Um, so, um, my question is, can we reopen that project? And can you put together a meeting with the Facebook group and have that, I don't know how that gets set up, the next steps, but I wanted to just see what we can do to revisit that project.
So. Or want to.
That, uh, don't we already have a, a, a plan put together for Central Street to, to, uh, to do the sidewalks, but it's not, not an easy job, because.
No.
There's some big, big trees and there's, and there's, and there's, uh, I, I looked at it myself a while, a, a couple of years ago.
Four years ago that they put something together.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember that.
And I looked at it all then, I'm like, wow, this is, this is a bit of a, this is a bit of a job because of.
I agree, my only, my only argument would be, it's only a matter of time till somebody gets hit on the turkey trot day, we got ten families walking down Central Street.
I think the key thing for your Facebook group would be to, uh, try to make sure that all of the people understand, so that, so, so that when the town tries to go do something, there's a group supporting them. You know, to, to, uh, to, uh, um, make sure that any of the takings that have to be done in order to do this don't run into too much trouble.
Okay, I think that if we could set up a meeting with the parties that are interested to explain the project, cause I know a lot of work has been done, I don't want to.
There's some money that's, there's some money that's already been put aside for the first stage, you know.
We did the design for the first phase.
Yeah.
Um, we could, the next steps would be, well, I, my thought was, we did have a neighborhood meeting a number of years ago.
Yeah.
Um, since then, we, you know, we completed the design for phase one, we did the, the M E P up and everything, um, because of the trade removal issue, so we got that part, um. It, it, it ends up fizzling a little bit, because we never found a funding source, um, we kept asking capital, and, um, you know, we, we couldn't get a complete streets grant big enough to, to cover that. Um, because we couldn't kick in the town's portion, but there are other possible options to continue looking for, um, my thought was maybe if we were to have with the engineering department, have a, a community meeting to just, you know, reach out, make sure people were, you know, still supportive of it. And we could see what the next steps would be, um, in, you know, the next step of design, uh, the next step of the environmental permitting, um, and maybe looking for ways that it could be funded, um.
Perhaps phase, so that it could make it more affordable, so you do it in bites.
I think getting it up to Spruce Street first is, all right, that's where the most of the neighborhoods.
Was it phased in that way or?
Um, the, the original plan, I think, is to, I think, is to spruce.
Yeah, I think it comes about, I think it's just a spruce.
Yeah, I don't think we designed it all the way in.
We didn't go all the way though.
Right.
I think the, from what I was told by the people who are on the Facebook page a while, that they said that the cost just ballooned, and it was more dangerous to do it from Spruce to North, because of the curves and the hills. So, um, there wasn't much push to go beyond phase one, just because of the cost. Like, I have a question, the new sidewalk that's been built on North Street, uh, looks lovely, how did, there's something like that come about, was that done by the town and?
Well, that was actually, uh, there are a number of people involved in it, we, um, we, uh, develop, we, a developer was, uh, um, we looked for a waiver, gave him a waiver, and they put up the money to have, uh, Michael Engineer, Michael O'Neil, the engineer, designed that whole sidewalk. Then it took us a while before we could collect enough money, and our side, what we had is a quote sidewalk fund, um, for us to collect enough money to actually facilitate the, the thing. So it was a number of years in the making, a number of years, okay, in the making, but it took, you know, a bunch of different things put together before we finally got done.
And also the, the newer work on the North Street sidewalk, um, I think that was part of the D P W's capital plan, so every year the D P W asks for an amount of money for sidewalk repair and, and, you know, replacement for.
Yeah, they put the, uh, the, uh. The little, for the, uh, handicapped thing, they put the little pads there, so.
It looks great, so.
That can be part of a capital plan, but it's, it covers like a little bit every year, it's so expensive, um, but I think, I mean, there are other options for funding, we have looked at a lot of grant programs that do pay for this kind of thing. There are newer grant programs, uh, that have come out over the years that we may be able to take advantage of, it's actually one of the things I was going to suggest with putting the C P C's work plan, because I've been hearing from people on Central Street more over the last, like, six months, a year.
Yeah, just driving down, you just, you feel bad for anyone that's attempting to either run or.
The fact that, the fact that we're trying to connect to a, to the park.
To the park.
Yeah, the fact that we're trying to do that connection there, I think will help us with the grant applications.
Yeah, Chris.
The bridge application we may well get, but for complete streets, which is what we were applying for, the town had to pay for the police detail, and that's the capital committee wouldn't give us enough money for that. It was, it was, it became so expensive, um, so, but there are other possible grants that we can look at, um, that should be options.
But that is on our, on our radar, so.
Perfect, how do I schedule a meeting?
I have your email, thank you, yeah.
Just wanted to make it official and say, I motion to create a meeting.
I like your persistence.
Create another meeting.
I'm going to coordinate with our town engineer too, if I coordinate with you as far as like, uh, the, the people on the Facebook page and just the best way to, for us to have, because I do have a contact list of people interested in this, in the sidewalk project.
Join the Facebook.
I could, um, well, I need to kind of know where it is and everything, but yeah, well, we can connect about that and figure out the best way, and then we can start talking about, you know, dates to have a meeting, um, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right, you'll have a good night.
Yeah, hopefully see you. Okay, it's, uh, eight o'clock, on the nose, good job, John. On the nose, uh, open the, uh, in for, uh, one U three railroad avenue, determination of the access. The applicants.
Yeah. Good evening, I'm back, attorney Josh Latham here tonight, and I'm behalf of one railroad out of L L C, which is the owner of both one and three railroad out. Uh, with me is Richard Cresta, who's on behalf of the owner, and Eric Lane, who's here from Hayes Engineering, and Peter O'Grady, who've done some, um, on the street design to this point. Um, so a little bit of where we are right now, so this is, this is two lots that are about one another, they've been owned in common ownership since April two thousand and fourteen. Um, on one railroad out, there are three existing dilapidated homes that date back about nineteen hundred, they've been vacant since at least two thousand and fourteen or so. On three railroad out, there is one existing home, again, dating back to about nineteen hundred, also vacant for many, many years, so those uses are admittedly abandoned. Um, what we're proposing tonight is to design, uh, roadway improvements to this private way called Railroad Avenue, which has existed since about the nineteen thirties, if not earlier. It's a twenty-foot right of way, uh, provides the only means of access to these two lots, uh, as well as to, in a butter, and it's the same means of access for the condominium development up by Avril Street. Um, a little bit of the history here, so the railroad, this was the old, um, Salem Lawrence branch or Salem Lowell branch of the Boston Main Railroad. Um, it was operated for many years, and then in about the nineteen thirties, um, ridership dropped off, they abandoned or discontinued the use in about nineteen forty-one. At that time, they deeded the properties that are really multiple properties along what used to be the railroad line, to the abutters that own the land abutting the railroad. Um, over the course of the years, uh, the road, twenty-foot ra, um, right of way has existed that entire time, it just hasn't been fully improved, it's been in various states of dirt road, pavement, gravel, et cetera. Um, then in about two thousand and seven, the town rezoned the land up by Avril Street, or. Um, then in about two thousand seven, the town rezoned the land up by April Street for our RM district. And a special permit was granted in two thousand seven to build about fourteen units in a townhouse style at that property. At that time, they started developing, and then in two thousand fifteen, they finally finished the project. And at that time, they relocated Railroad Avenue where it runs from their lands over to April Street, so it was pulled further away from the Ipswich River. So as it is presently located, it's not the historic location that was actually very close to the river. It's actually pulled back and runs almost like a driveway through, uh, the condominium project. Um, in about nineteen sixty-two, all of the owners along Railroad Out granted the town perpetual easement for water installation, and that still exists through Railroad Out. Uh, and really where we are today, uh, the proposal is, there isn't any firm plan yet, but the idea is that we're, we're looking to build two homes at the end here, one on each of what would have been the existing lots. Um, the idea is that this is the first step in our process. The idea of determining that this access can be improved to meet adequate access standards for the town. The next step would be an A and R application. Um, either pursuing to create the two lots based on the idea that the pre-existing structures predate nineteen forty-four, and therefore we'd separate based on that basis. Uh, the big takeaway is that we do have many other steps to take. Wetlands, uh, is obviously an implicating factor, flood zone, stormwater management. Um, and ultimately what we may actually pursue is, is limited frontage, uh, for one of the lots, and we actually think we have enough land that would actually qualify for a limited frontage loss uh, to have two conformant lots. So that's really where we're looking to go next. But again, the first step tonight is is seeking your approval to determine if the roadway can be improved to meet your standards. And with that, if I could turn over to Eric Lane, provide the technical details.
Good.
Yeah, Eric.
Good evening, uh, Eric Lane from Hayes Engineering. Um, really know a lot to the plans, so I think the easiest way maybe is go through your minimum construction standards for the roadway. Um, your minimum layout width is twenty feet, which is what this is, and meet that, which requires an eighteen feet of pavement. Uh, currently, it's about sixteen, I believe, because of the existing utility poles there. Our plan is to move the utility poles to the edge of the layout, so we'll have the eighteen feet of pavement to get the full way down in front of the proposed lots. Um, item two is a turnaround of a dead end street. Your requirements for, for the town's requirements for a hundred and twenty foot diameter circle, not really feasible here. Uh, we've designed a turnout area where the town's largest fire truck will be able to make the turn. Uh, so that's one issue that we deviate from your standards. Uh, the dress was pretty much spot on, and you have a maximum grade of nine percent. This area is very flat, we're at one percent. Uh, these leveling areas intersection, again, we're levels, so really no way to do there. Construction standards for the subbase, subgrade, pavement, we've had that detail in our plan, we're matching that, so we're building to the town's standards. Curving is required. The roadway's sort of super elevated because the whole site wants to drain to the north, I believe it is. And we have curving on the downhill side to catch the water, which will run along, which then goes into storm drains. We have a deep sump catch basin with a proprietary pot to separate a barracuda type unit, which gets here, cleans, cleans the stormwater, so to speak, before it goes into infiltration chambers. Uh, overall runoff rates as designed are reduced to everything, both volume and peak rate. Uh, sidewalks require a case by case standard. We're only proposing two houses down here at this time. We do not propose a sidewalk. And really, given the twenty foot width, the eighteen feet required pavement, there's really no room to add a sidewalk. Uh, slopes, again, we've covered that, it is very flat, so we have no problem meeting that. Water services, there's an existing two inch water line that goes down there now. That's shown on the plan. We still are planning a meeting with both the fire department and the town's water to determine how they want to handle it, and initial conversations with the fire department, they seem to indicate they'd like houses to be sprinkled. Uh, so that is probably the route that they're gonna steer us to go. We probably emphasize the main to get enough flow to feed the sprinkler system. Which, from civil engineer, I kind of appreciate that, because we put a larger, like, eight inch main down there, only feeding two houses. You don't really get the water flowing there, so a lot of it gets stagnant in the pipe, and you get brush issues and sediment stuff. So a smaller pipe though, satisfy the fire department and energy is point of view is probably the best way to go. Uh, electrical and telephone, again, there's existing poles down there. We're just gonna relocate them to the edge of the right of way. Trees, there's minimal trees down there, and look, because there is an existing gravel right of way that goes down there now. Uh, you do require a layout plan that we've not provided yet, but we can, we will provide that before any final vote is taken, we'll be signed by the surveyor, and, you know, inspections from the town are required, you know, issue there, obviously. Uh, the fire department did ask that we conform to, to pull chapter eighteen of the fire code. I did a memo back to that, I can go over if you want, or we can just meet with the fire department and hopefully get a sign up from them. So a lot of just, it's deals with access, which is what we're trying to conform to, and the fire flow, water service, so uh, basically dealing with them and getting their sign off for approval. Got any further comments or do you say?
No, I, I would say, you know, barring any questions, that, that would conclude our initial presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody from the public here that wants to comment? Just state your name and.
I'm Debbie Fusco. Barbara lives right next door to his project. The road runs on either side of her property. Right now, the road is sixteen feet wide, moving the telephone poles another four feet over closer to the house and cutting into the front yard is what's going to happen. So there's a lot of things to think about here. Right now, there's a lot of traffic on that road with people going to the end, turning around all the time. She never knows who's there. There's a lot of wetlands down there. Um, it's been abandoned. It's hard to see what's going on down there, but it's going to impact her property significantly. And that's where our concern is.
You addressed the, the pole move, the four foot pole move.
Certainly. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's being required to get the required access width to get down to the properties. And, uh, it's being, the poles are being kept within the right of way, so they would not necessarily be moved, they're not being moved on private property that was in that right of way.
In my right to, when, when I went down there the last time Peter was here and it, the, you were, you did the presentation. Um, it pinches right there, kind of at the end of, call it the condo road, it, it seems, and there's a transformer there, I believe, and a pole just after. And so what are you proposing to do, say at that location for, for me, that's the pinch point, and then it seems to open up after that. Um, am I right or wrong? I mean, you know, you know well. Um, so what are you proposing like at that point? Like, what's that gonna look like?
Um, the current condominium has the paved driveway access down there. I think the plan is to just continue that and sweep it over to where the right of way is, and to the gravel.
So where's that end then? So on their new, newer paved road, where it comes, they have a sidewalk even, I think, right there, and it kind of just ends, there's a transformer and a pole. Is, is that, that's within the right of way, I assume?
All right.
Are you moving, when you mentioned moving poles, is that, you know, maybe you can show us too. It's always better to show on a plan.
Absolutely. Um, I cannot see the pole you're referring to it there. The first pole we're planning on moving is opposed to.
Is that where the transformer is though?
This is where the hydrant is. I believe this is the end of their improvements is down in here.
The transformer via hydrant and then pole.
You got the sequence in, is it, so where is, you don't see a transformer in that or?
I do not, no. Yeah, there's a hydra.
It's the other way, further up. So the first thing in that shaded area is the pole itself?
This pole here is the first pole that we were.
That's the first.
Proposing to move this.
Okay. I think in, in this, this is just a question, uh, uh, as far as feasibility. What I, what I was struck by when I saw it is why not? Because poles, most of them are, are pretty old and leaning and all that. Why not? Especially if you're just trying to feed the lots, why not just go underground for a hundred and twenty feet on the duck bank? Like, wouldn't that just be easier than poles and things like that?
Um, I was not involved with that. I apologize. I was not involved with negotiation with the, uh, health company. I saw a little bit of that, see if that was discussed.
Right.
Why?
Well, what I mean is, I don't, I don't know, some of the, I guess, the legal parts of that, like, and how that land would have to be separated, because maybe then it would go secondary from that point or whatever, from that, that last pole, the first pole or wherever, because they're all, they're all, the aerial's gone for them, and then it starts back again, but it's an old system. So I was just struck like, why not go underground for the rest of the system from the transformer, um, since, since the rest of it is. Um, and even if it's primary, you'd go down halfway, and so the secondary from the second lot or whatever would just have to come back. You know, not, not much different than, you know, most homes have to do.
Right, but the transformer right in the lot line.
Yeah, like right in between or something, and then your secondary runs are just short. But that would, for me, I, I can't speak for the fire department, but that, that's the fear with a narrow road is just someone's gonna back up and hit the pole and, you know, just, and then it, it creates a pinch point too, just by having the pole, even though it's in the right of way. Um, because sometimes you rely on just that, the ability to go over the curve with a larger truck or whatever, you know, so it can make the turn. Well, if the pole's sitting right there, you know, you're, you're, you're getting pinched, and, and then so it tightens, tightens it up. Now, so, um, just, that's just an impression right now. I know we're, we're talking about more determination, but that would be something that, um, I think we should look strongly at. Um, so Debbie, did you have any other, were there any other items that key?
Who's gonna pay for all this?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this would be paid by the applicant.
So. The town on land that the little strips, did you guys give that to him? Who's gonna buy that, the little, uh, strips for him to do the turnaround on the right?
Yeah, can you show to where those are just for the, the rest of us?
No town land is required.
Yeah, no, I, I agree from last time, I remember it was not in that plan.
But there are abutters against that, right, that would need approval.
Not sure, I mean, you can speak to that, no? Okay, and just show those so other people can see here where the, where the, um, North Reading land is.
This is five, correct. I believe that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
That's what I remember, it's near the end.
That's the town on land. This is, this is owned by the same ownership here, so this is where the turnout is, is on, on the applicant's property.
Does that answer your question or no?
When you go down to the end of the road.
Yeah.
There's across from those houses, there's two, like, strips. That's town on land. No, didn't buy it?
No, it's not.
Because you'd have to get an easement from them.
Town on, town on land starts here and here, not, not where that area is.
And we're going to the end there, so that's like where that really old house is down the end. I think there's an older abandoned house even maybe or?
Yeah, the homes are in that one. From this area to here. So thi- this is the same line as that existing garage.
Yeah.
See it here, her garage right here.
Yeah.
It's the same, same line.
So, so I wonder, David, she's referring to the, the five feet wide access easement?
Hmm.
That's here.
Is that for the river access or?
That's, I mean, so that five foot, if you look at it, kind of like tapers from where the property, the town on land is.
Is it that?
And it like tapers at, at an angle.
At.
And it goes right by the, the turnaround, proposed turnaround. It continues, um, if you look at the drawing, um, at the bottom part of the gray shaded area.
Right.
You see where it says, um, proposed five foot wide access easement, and that whole strip, it appears that it continues all the way across and down at an angle and comes off of the roadway.
The telephone pole that's inside the property.
Yeah.
That we won't leave anymore.
Right. I, I believe the reason that happened is that is all on the applicant's property. We're proposing that easement so we can kick the access road over so to avoid moving, there's a telephone pole down further, to avoid moving the further telephone poles. Once we got onto the applicant's property, we, you see the drive, the roadway slides over to avoid the poles. We have our eighteen feet of pavement, and that's why that is a proposed five foot access easement, doesn't exist now, it's, you know, owners rights and, you know, does not exist.
It's essentially actually to widen.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, then that is.
Five, so you kind of buffer into allowing the fire truck. We're unable to in, in, increase the width anywhere else except on our land, but that's what we can do.
Um. If, if you were to go, I mean, the, one of the issues with, you know, removing poles, say if you did go that avenue, is then you lose your, your ability to have your aerial, you know, light. So what would you, what would you do to light the street at all?
So that, so this, this, um, the last pole here will stay, and then we'll go underground for on, straight to the two houses. So there's a pole that's still there, right where that property line is currently existing. There would be, uh, a new pole though.
What's your thoughts on that, Warren?
Can put a street light on that pole, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Imagine you don't want a lot of light, but you, I mean, most of the modern lights are.
If he's gonna go underground for his property, why doesn't he just go underground all the way?
That's definitely on the, on the table, but, you know, I'm just trying to do, also go down the avenue of the safety of having lighting, but I do respect too that the, the owners around there don't also want a, a light show either, but most of the modern lights are more downcasting, and they're not quite like deal flights that we're, grew up with. Um, so.
It's security.
I think, yeah, my, my inclination that any improvement on the street though, to make it this final street with final two lots, it's just two homes, would be a vast improvement over just having this dark dead end that people just go down, just like you say, for what reason, or what, you know, it's, if it's all occupied and lit up and well, well paved and curved, it's, I think it's gonna make it a safer street, unless people just choosing to go down the end of it or whatever. Um, but, um, that's a personal opinion.
It'll be a dead end sign, probably, with that idea.
Yeah, yeah, so that they don't go past that point of condos maybe.
Yeah.
Um, but there's definitely, there's definitely work to do here. Um, I'm not, we're not, i- i- we're not sitting here to approve the entire project right now or anything like that, but. Um, but.
And we, we wanna do right.
Yeah.
Barbara.
Well, how would the town feel about the strip of land that they owned before, uh, by Railroad Ave and the condos? Who's gonna speak to the, the town on that? I'm sorry, let's. The small piece of linen between Railroad Ave and the condos, a piece that was never titled.
Oh, but they, where they moved the street, I, I don't know, like, what would happen with that.
We have a lot of oddball pieces.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. If it helps, to the extent that this is a right of way and under Massachusetts law, it's explicit, then anybody that has the right to use it has the right to keep it passable and to.
Yeah, and for all.
Safety and.
Yeah, that is the law.
Cleaning install your town.
That would be the extent of our, our work here, working to improve the existing.
Right, and your costs too.
Yes.
Yeah, which is. Benefits others, but your, uh, right to do. Um, okay. Jeff, do you have any questions?
No, I, I vaguely remember this from before, and the telephone pole was the, the issue before.
Yeah.
Um. I tried, I remember we checked about the turnaround too, and they opened that up and.
I think this solves that, so that's like a.
I remember that wasn't, I don't think it was like that originally.
No, it wasn't, right?
Yeah.
Well, that turnabout would only work if there's not wetlands there, correct? It's very wet in that turnabout.
It's actually not.
It's been flagged. I mean, I'm assuming if you've done this much engineering.
Yeah. Probably as you come further down, it gets wet.
I definitely saw a wet.
At that particular point.
The town property, you know, beyond that, that.
Probably trying to push it up as, as much as we could.
Yeah. Um. Okay. Yeah, to me, again, when I visited, that was the impression is, it's all about the utility poles. I could envision seeing that street improved in a narrow fashion, but it was, it was definitely the utility poles just stood out, like, this needs, something needs to happen with it.
We already talked about.
Yeah.
Writing municipal lights, so.
Yeah. And like Warren just said too, it's like a balancing act you have to do. You know that the, the primary extension and although RMLD is great, out of all the companies, it's not ever sourced. See it, see it next year kind of thing. Um, but, you know, where, where, where is that primary end, and then where the secondary, that's a balancing act for you guys to do.
Yeah.
I know where you.
Down the secondary.
Yeah, where you're gonna, get your meter at the furthest point, you know, west, so you can hit it and, um, but. Yeah, I mean, Max, do you have any, have you been down there, Max?
Uh, you know, I actually have not been all the way to the end.
Okay.
So I have no time.
You were too scared, right? You turned, you turned around.
My driveway.
Who's the guy that's down the end here that trips a mosquito and bagged it?
My husband.
Oh, there you go. I've been running back, floating everywhere a number of times, so. I don't know if it'll lead, help there to show up there.
I don't know if it'll help their show picture or anything like that, just for.
I know I have that on my phone, but if anyone else wants to see it, like that street view.
I have a question. Um, they talked about the water line earlier. What's the distance that you have to go from where Hable Street comes into that by extending? The property. Far as they're going, there's no being required or anything like that for this. Cause it was a five hundred feet, Warren?
Yeah, five hundred feet is what they wanna have a, a high one, but. I mean, what, would you, uh, talk to, well, you haven't really talked to the water people yet.
So Barry said we can do either or. I think his preference was to have sprinklers.
Do you want a slight six inch main?
Say it again.
Do you want a six inch main or?
Uh, whatever they determine, I'll, I'll, I can, I'll, I'll give that up to the experts, but.
We have to hire a, a mechanical. Yeah, but add on the size for sprinkler systems. Yeah, but.
What's the service to that last, the, the last hydrant right now? It is an A, okay, alright.
Well, it's the regular plant shop. That's what I'm assuming is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they, they wouldn't have to loop anything then?
No, or, or extend the hydrant. That would be the hydrant.
Oh, okay. So that's, okay.
And so just because of, you know, if, if they were to extend something, it, that'd be expensive. You could do the sprinkler thing. You know, make the house safer, I think.
Yeah, you're usually on the inch and a half line if you're gonna sprinkle. So two of those off a six inch line.
We're putting them in every house in my developments.
Funny water.
Seven thousand dollars a house.
Yeah.
Um, so.
But we think overall it's a net positive for everybody, including you, Barbara.
Any other comments?
By the way, proceed, what happens next?
So.
Next steps.
Um, I think we're in, we're right now here for determination if we would accept the, um. Call it non-conforming, I guess, street or, you know, or.
That the other communities were supposed to put their input into this, like conservation.
Yeah, other departments.
You have that information now? Have you covered all that?
Uh, yeah, it's in the, there is, it, it is online, but I can also.
We couldn't find it online.
Oh, the department levels, um, I can send it to you if you'd like. Um, sure. Yeah, I think I.
And a lot of times what we find is the comments are giving the civil engineer good direction on, I'm, I'm gonna want this, I'm gonna want that. But usually if it's a no, especially we get that from public safety, fire, police, then we take notice and that's when you're pumping the brakes. But we don't really have that in this case. So again, this, uh, this would be a determination, then they would come back. And do the A and R, right? I think so. That would be the layout of the lots that we.
What does A and R mean exactly?
Application not required, approval, approval, sorry, not required, um, which is basically just, does it meet? Certain, yeah, minimum requirements or, or not.
If I made the, the idea behind A and R is to, is to approve plans that could be filed, so that the lot is created legally.
So that creates the lot and then we'll come back and do, I guess.
Yeah, wouldn't be a site interview. So the determination of access is where you say what street improvements you require in order to allow these to be building lots. Um, so the street improvements are what are at issue now, whether you want improvements to the, the water lines, whether you want paving, widening, all of that stuff, lighting. Um, and so I think my, my recommendation probably be to hold off on an approval until we have everything finalized in terms of the discussion with the fire department. The stamp from the land surveyor, which is required to be on the plan for the street layout. There, I think there might've been a couple of minor outstanding things, but I. A decision could be, you know, in the near future, but that would only be for the street improvements and to say that these are going to be accessible. You know, or this is an approved acceptable improved street for access. Then the A and R plan would come in and it's approval not required under subdivision control, which means it's not a full subdivision plan. It's not a public hearing. Um, but it is a process where the planning commission, um, signs off on a plan to create new lots as long as there's adequate street frontage. But there can't be adequate street frontage until this is really, um, you know, to, and.
So we wanna continue then?
I would continue. It's been exceeding the.
Yeah. That's August sixth.
August sixth, if that works for you.
Great. And do you have, um, do we have?
Yeah, there's a motion for continuing.
Um, Jeff, do you have that? Um, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you actually, yeah, I could help you on that one. So what, um, date do we, Danielle, do we want?
August sixth.
I moved to the community. I know, no more discussion, Dave and Greg. Okay, I moved to the community planning commission vote to continue the public hearing for one and three railroad app until August sixth. Two thousand twenty twenty four. And do we have a time? Eight P M.
Second.
Yeah, second.
Our discussion is second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Close. I could show it for.
Sorry, who's second?
I'm Warren. So more compared, we'll see you guys on August sixth. You for coming down.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down too. Thank you. Always nice in person. You can get a lot more help, I think. No offense to online. I love you guys too. Someone have a thought? Well, again, we're continuing, so in two weeks. All set?
Thank you.
Alright, so what's next?
See ya guys, have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night in our humble.
Great to meet you.
In our closet.
Hello closet. Dozy in here. You wouldn't wanna do a big contentious one here, would you? Alright, so I think we should go to the evaluation of the seven Saint Teresa Street. Try like, I'm sitting here like, is that nobody else?
Yeah, that parking lot is that way.
Oh wait, nobody else. So for everybody's purposes, did everyone read all the stuff for seven Saint Teresa?
I need a salutation.
Okay. There was four documents, I think, in there. Okay. Thank you.
They printed them for us, so I did ask for hard copies.
Danielle, is there a, um, I'm just curious, was there a, um? Donation to them for this project? Um, maybe some like showing stuff and.
I'm sure they'd love that.
Union Connegeal Church sends people, uh, every year to work for Habitat for Humanity down to South Carolina.
Yeah, South Carolina, right?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, i- is there a contact person, you know, Danielle, that I could reach out?
Yeah, there's two names there, right?
Or Sheila.
They're right there on the second page. Yeah, Sheila.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you.
I guess, hey, whatever.
Yeah, I'm sure that would be tremendously helpful.
So Danielle, I've never done this before for, you know, for this, so if, and maybe others haven't. So Jeff, I don't know if you've ever done this before. I haven't ever, you know, rated one of these, you know. RFP returns here, so we're, I mean, this looks self-explanatory, but as far as. Are we gonna discuss like each category or is it like silent?
You can totally discuss each category. Um, the idea is, um, that we, even though only one person responded, we still should do the formal evaluation. Um, because it is, you know, in our process. So the idea is to have, um, we, we put evaluative criteria in here saying what we were looking for. In the RFP and then, you know, they respond to that and then we're kind of marking them on how well they have responded and the criteria really are pretty basic. Are they capable of doing the project and do they have experience? Um, and you know, where their reference is good. And so we can talk about each of these items and we can, you know, every, you don't have to agree on the scores. You can just write down. The score that you feel is, uh, you know, appropriate. And then if we end. They're tallied up and the highest, uh, score is the person recommended to get the project. Of course, we only have one person. But I'm supposed to collect those evaluation forms just because it's the RFP process. We're supposed to have a record that we.
Do we, so we'll sign them to maybe or yeah, okay. So we're learning something here. So, oh, well, I was gonna say too, um, if you wanna like, we'll start with maybe a little discussion. Cause I, I've read through it. I don't know if others, did you guys have any, um, things that you picked up from it? Um, and I, I think more so I was, it was more in the.
There's a lot of advertising in there.
Oh, yeah, thanks for my water there, yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of advertising based on, you know, what they just talked about, what they've done and what they do. Um, but the meat and the bones of it are, you know, what they, they are. They, they've done a bunch of these projects. It's not brand new, Attic. They know all the ins and outs. So they're actually a good. It's a good one to have do it because you know they have, I mean, they have local, uh, project that they've done. It's not in Tewksbury and Concord and. All, all around here, so, uh, all like at the dog, since where'd you work, you know? You know, you wanna try this the first time. That's not what we got here. We had a professional group of people who've done this. And, and having worked with them through the church too, as you know, we, we are, uh, they've been absolutely wonderful and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's the part where are the experiences like to me, you know, this is Habitat, but. The, um, if you wanna go to page thirteen, I think that's what reeks down a little bit of meat of what they're kind of proposing to build. And if it saves you, I think from going, you know, a lot of this is.
Now, when Sheila dropped off the application, she said, you really wanna stress a flexibility. We, this is a proposed design. We've done this design before, but if the town wants it to look different or to be configured differently, we are completely open.
Got it. So if you read on the second paragraph, they have in here, there'll be two, um, fourteen hundred square foot. Um, spaces, two full bathrooms in each unit. And since while we could expand and build the larger size, should North Reading desire, uh, this would increase our costs and reduce efficiencies gained through. reusable architecture designs regardless of total size, these will be beautiful if we can move up. Um, it's also, let's see if it's in, uh, down here. Uh, okay. Yeah, it's also worth noting that after speaking with, uh, Mezner Bram Corporation, they believe there is more buildable space on this lot. Thank you, Debbie.
Yeah.
Uh, therefore we would also be amenable to different architectural designs and potential of either building. Two single family homes or two duplexes if the town would allow for more units. The design included. With this proposal was designed for a narrower lot and we are open to adjustments based on the town's wishes. So just wondering some opinions on like that. Um, that paragraph.
I'm sorry.
Meisner Bram, I'll say the ones that, that designed the whole Colts Road, would they use the streets for flood storage? I remember all that stuff.
Yeah, I think there, it's a fourth number.
Was that a good experience?
He said, well, where's your flood storage? You know, in the street.
I did wanna note too, at the mention of the suggestion that there could be more units, the town meeting vote restricted, um, this property to maximum two units.
Thank you. You just, you just kinda got to what I was gonna say. I think this is restricted, so.
Yeah.
But they're, yeah, they're being creative saying, hey.
Well, thank them for their interest and send them on their way.
Yeah. Um, the, the other part too that caught my eye was on just schedule and I just wanted to kind of understand, I mean. I just thought it was strange that they're, you know, and, and I know, I think a Habitat home takes a little bit longer to build. Um, than your average, cause I mean, we build them in seven months and they're twenty-two to twenty-four hundred square foot. Um, but this is like a ten month process, but then there's like a three or four month overlap just from doing one unit to the next, which seemed like a very lengthy process. And. I mean, with that site, um, it just prolongs the period that it's under construction. So I'm wondering if. You know, if, if anyone had any thoughts on that, Warren?
So, um. I, I, I understand, I, I, the fact that they, the first house wasn't gonna be available twenty-six and they were way, they were way out. With the second house being finished.
Yeah.
Um, I did notice that.
Cause you have a move in and then you have like the, so there's a move in and yet there's construction like right next door, you know, a joint almost, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just wondering like, that would just be, it's more of a question to them, like, can these just simultaneously, you know, kind of.
Really not all that different between a, and a subdivision where they, where one house gets built.
It's just a little bit more intimate here.
The hole next door.
Yeah.
You know, so, so that really, that's, that really is not so unusual, but I do understand that one of the reasons is that they. That they dragged this out is that it's, it's probably a cash flow situation as well as they have, they take, have a lot of volunteer work that comes in. That's what Habitat is about. So when you have volunteer work, you're gonna, it's gonna take you longer to get the whole thing done. So I, I was a little. A little concerned about the length of time they said it was gonna take for these houses to be done, but by the same token. You know, you, I, you know, we're getting, we're getting what we're looking for. We're gonna get houses, um. That are well-built, that are done by people who do this, that are energy efficient, energy safe, you know?
Yeah. And I, I do notice too, the, the real like meat, call it the MEP interior fit out is only a week offset, so.
Yeah.
I was, you know, as Je- if Jeff knows, you know, Jeff's coming to visit and then he has to wait three weeks to go back in, like he'd rather have his. Truck there and go knock out all the stuff, but there's only a one week offset. So that's where they actually kind of match up again.
Yeah.
So I mean, again, I, I'm nitpicking here and I shouldn't be nitpicking.
But I, I guess my, I, I, I noticed it, but then after thinking about it for a while, I was not terribly concerned, so.
Okay. Alright, so that's good.
I'd say it sounds pretty normal for Habitat project.
Alright, so you convinced me, Mr. Pierce. I appreciate that. Um, that was really, cause after that it went into kind of disreferences and.
Yeah, I agree.
I did reach out to the references. I've heard back from Jennifer Colito so far. She said her, her words were, we loved them. They were great to work with. Very compassionate folks who are as well who are hardworking. Um, I didn't reach out to Liz Russ because she was the consultant we used to work with in our housing services office. She was the original person who recommended that we pursue Habitat for these lots. She's like, this is their sweet spot. This is what they do, this type of lot, so. Um, but I have reached out to the others and I will definitely, you know, let you know whatever I hear.
It's, it, it's exciting now. It's great.
I think it's cool.
Yeah.
Because one of the other things that, that they, that, uh, if you read through the whole thing, it, it gives people in the local community an opportunity.
Yeah, jump in.
They'll, they'll advertise and say, if you wanna come work, if you wanna come pay, come pay.
Yep.
And you can, and you, so you can give, um, you know, people in the community, it's, uh, an opportunity to actually be involved in the completion of the project. It, it builds community, so it's a great thing.
So Danielle, did you have any comments on the schedule? Did that seem realistic as far as that, the, kind of the? The pre-construction type of stuff, um.
I think so. If that's their normal timeline, I think that's pretty form.
Right.
I, I think though that what could push it back would only be, I remember this question, well, um, could, could be. However, long it might take the town to convey it, because what would have to happen is if we make a recommendation to the select board that they be chosen people to do this. Um, project, they still have to vote to convey it. This project does not include any, you know, payment from Habitat. Because they would expect it to be conveyed for free. It also doesn't ask the town for any type of subsidy. So the select board will have to be, you know, amenable to giving it to them. I think that was our purpose all along in doing this, but they're the, ultimately the decision makers on that. So, um, that would be the only thing I could push it back, I would think.
See the date, January twenty fifth. Oh, I mean, that makes.
I, I would hope that that would be a realistic timeframe for us to, on, on the town's part to, to do what we need to do. Um, I hope so, but you never know. I know that's.
Yeah, Dave, I have a question, maybe one to answer. So new to this, obviously. So I'm just curious, what does the town benefit? By like giving away a piece of land, like it's set aside for this explicit purpose?
Yeah, uh, you're asking me and Danielle can answer, but yes, um, there's actually, um, four other parcels or the three other.
We have, well, but.
Three more we're working on?
So we had, uh, we had done work on, uh, four properties. Two of them are adjacent to each other, so that would really be a single, um, but they're are, they're part of a portable housing overlay district, which is a series. Two of them are adjacent to each other, so that would really be a single, um, but they're are, they're part of a affordable housing overlay district, which is a series of, I think it's thirteen parcels. Throughout the town that, um, many years ago, the CPC had gone through a process of saying, these are almost. Perfect blocks as far as zoning goes, but they're a little deficient and they're probably not ever gonna be developed for like a regular single-family house. They might need zoning relief. They might need, you know, various things, but it might be suitable for affordable housing. And so we went through a process a couple of years ago. Um, where, when we were initially approached by Habitat and we, you know, realizing that we have these properties that are zoned for. There's, there, there, it's a little bit of a more permissive zoning in exchange for doing affordability. So you can do two units on a property, but you normally can't do if they're affordable. So that zoning bylaw was put in place about fifteen, twenty, maybe, um, and then. The town happened to all, all of the property in that zoning district. So we've only now started the process of trying to convey it out to affordable housing developers. Now, affordable housing units are all constructed at a loss unless they have market rate units there to make up the difference. So these are all one and two and, you know, three or four, um, family-sized properties. They're not huge. And what we really are looking for would be affordable units. So to do that, you have to have a group like Habitat to actually construct without having to. Cuz otherwise, we, the town would have to give money to someone who was gonna construct affordable housing because it's a small-scale project. If it was a fifty or a hundred unit development, it'd be different. Um, but for one or two units, that's kind of how the financial. So yes, they were sort of set aside as, um. Being suitable for affordable housing and we're just kind of now starting with this, so figuring out how to do it.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Excuse me for a second. So they're, they're proposing. Two singles or two duplexes, is that? It's, it looks like they're joined though, right? Yeah, but they're both fourteen hundred, so shared party wall kind of thing. Fourteen hundred on each side, I think, if you go back to twelve.
I, I think you've already said it's only been approved for two units, so it could be a duplex or. Two individual homes.
Yeah, so this looks like a, an attached, um, two single attached, so two units total as.
Attached, yeah. There it is. Thank you, Danielle. So I mean. I'm, I'm cool with rating, if you guys wanna proceed with that right now, instead of the labor, I mean, I think. Um, this is what we've been trying to do at least the whole six years or whatever it been on CPC. Here we are doing two.
They basically met, and, and we knew that they would. They basically met all our criteria. And, and we knew, so I mean, I don't, I don't know how you, uh, how are we supposed to grade these, but, um. They've obviously done more than three, so what do we, what do we do? Just, uh?
We'll just put, like, uh, one rating is, is the best. So we really have only three boxes here down this right-hand column. It can either be a one, two, or three. Um, and so the first one is the developer's experience, similar affordable housing development, including permitting and construction. Um, but down what you guys feel here. Yeah, well, the, these are giving you the, um, the criteria. So that's what the criteria is. That's the rating system. So the rating is one of those. It's either one, two, or three in your opinion.
And a lower score would be better.
Correct, in this case, yeah.
Yeah, they're all ones, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's. So.
That's fine. If you wanna put your names on, I'll just collect it and I'll stick it in the file, just as a record that we did our, you know.
Yep. Or whatever you want.
But whatever you think is appropriate.
Can't push anybody. Um, I'll hang on to that, though. Yeah, hang on to your packets, cuz that'll be a good reference.
We don't have a, uh, price, so we'll consider overall value, so we don't know what that.
It's gonna be zero, zero or a dollar, right? I think legally, yeah. Alright, so pass those forward. I'll pass them over and then we'll move on to the next thing here.
We have to put our name on.
Yep.
Do you want to take a, a vote to recommend to the select board that?
Let's do it. Yeah, so if we don't have a motion, they're just gonna read, we're just reading off.
I moved that we recommend Habitat to Humanity to the select board disposition of the seven, um, premises, uh, project, uh, property.
I'll say. Second?
I'll second that.
Alright. Motion second, all in favor? Actually, any further discussion?
Your papers. What are you doing?
What am I doing?
I just think you say.
Doesn't take that long to make three ones.
Do you have any, uh, further discussion, Jeff?
No.
Alright, no comments? Alright, all in favor? Uh, I oppose, or in favor, opposed?
I'm really happy that you got Habitat. I think it's good. There's so much good that can look about this. It's, uh, it's, uh.
Okay, so that one is done. So why don't we use stormwater and subdivision regulations discussion?
Oh, sure. That was the one Mrs. John Engineer just said when I said.
Reference to this one of the applicants, so it was that. Okay, I get you. Now I understand.
Yeah, he needs to familiarize himself with the requirements.
We all do. That's cool. Alright, and then, uh, and then why don't we just talk about, cuz I don't think it should be long. Cuz I, I think you just provided the, uh, the dates, but the three A, M E T A for warrants, um. So it's just like with the one for June, it's the same X weeks back from that, like that they need to be in, and that's what we did before. We voted, put it on it. There is obviously, you know, a lot of discussion after that and then, you know, you know. Not pass over, we at first thought it was pass over, but, um, so that's pretty much, I guess, you know, that's the course. Moving forward. So is there, does anyone have any questions on, you know, what, you know, what that process is, Jeff? Do you have any? I know you're passionate about it, so I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so I mean, so at this point, I'm kind of questioning that town meeting. This said language of the, the amendment and the.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, the actual language that, that came out of that. I haven't seen it. Um, I wonder if I could get that, like the minutes to that.
Sure, like exactly what motion was needed.
Yeah, because, um. Yeah, before I would move on, anything like that, I would just wanna make sure that that, cuz it was quite confusing once the amendment came. And even the town, um.
Hang on. Is anyone else on?
Uh, no, the participant is.
Cuz I was just gonna say, but no one else is on, so I'm not even gonna waste my breath, but what was, can, what was disappointing at the town meeting? And this is our first meeting since then, but was, so this is more just amongst ourselves, but it could, I, I'd share the same thing with a larger group is, is that. We went in with good faith to put it, um, on, you know, to put it on the warrant first. And then our group had a lot of, um, conflicting passions about it, whatever, and we voted to, and we, we used the town's direction. In language on that, on that wording of that, um, to pass over and then. When we learned over the weekend or that Friday, you're like, whoops, that can't be the language, whatever. We, we all got together. We, we met with council. There was no one, um, kicking and screaming, whatever. We all sat down. We all agreed. We all came up with the new wording and then it was just disappointing that, you know, select and Valeri got up and, and. You know, somehow thought we were up to something. That's how it felt, like what, we, we've been do, we did nothing in those three weeks, say, leading up to that point, but. Follow the town's direction on this is what we're supposed to do. You know, we're just volunteers and we were told to vote on this motion. We did. And we found out that wording's not good and council comes in, tells us they drafted, again, we had no, we were not at the wheel for either of these two. Motions or votes or whatever. And then to have just an individual come in because he doesn't like. He didn't confer with council or anything. He just comes in, kind of, I think, again, makes, it's slightly embarrassing for us. It wasn't a good look. Um, and I say that again, I'm on record here, I'm online, but it just wasn't a good look for, for us. It was, I just thought uncalled for, for. Select board member to do that without like, why don't you just check with council if you're not in agreement with the way the wording is, so, um. You know, moving on, you know, it is what it is. It's not like, no, didn't lose a lot of sleep over it. But it would, it just, I, I don't think, I think everyone that was present, it was just confusing and it confused the audience. Um, we had to, I had to handwrite in motions with the moderator. It just looked like, you know, after two days. So town meeting, it just made us look unprofessional or it made, I don't know, I thought it made them look unprofessional, but either way, I just thought it was uncalled for.
So I did too, and that's why I find it like, I, I thought it was so unnecessary. Because the intent from the beginning, yes, we're kind of going back and forth and that's what we're supposed to do. Right? As a group, we're supposed to discuss all these things and come to these conclusions and try to, you know, go through a lot of this stuff. And, um, you know, and I know I was a real pain in the neck, Danielle, in the beginning, and I just couldn't get in my head.
You put up with it.
But no, really, you did, and you've done a great, you guys have really done a great job. And the thing is, the last thing we needed, we sat with council. We, Warren, we, 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 you know, and I was like, great, fine, good, alright, great. And then boom, a ranch gets thrown in. So, which I thought was totally unnecessary because the intent was to. Continue to move forward. Yeah, and, and I think everybody knows that and all you had to do was say, hey, guys, is your intent to move forward with this thing?
Which we would have said, yes, and again, everything we did up to that point showed the evidence we were. We voted on the three weeks before, we voted again in, in, in private before the meeting because we were told we had to reword it. I mean, so everything was moving forward the way we were supposed to. And then I even got up and said, we're gonna vote on it.
We have it on our, Dave, we have it on, on our agenda tonight. Look at all the people.
Yeah, so obviously, you know, this is how many people care about it.
You know, and the other thing I can say is that, that we probably over my time, but I, I can't tell you how many times we brought zoning changes. And, and nobody, you know, and years ago, da, 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 zoning change and they go, oh, yeah, okay, yeah, fine. They don't even know, they don't even know. Yeah, so, so they would have just, they would have just voted this in without even a second glance, if it wasn't better.
And you know what? The net would be nothing. So on August, what's the date?
Um, the date of warrant.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna vote or be prior to that date, we're gonna vote to put it on the October warrant like we did before. And then we're gonna go over the next few weeks. We can have some more public sessions if we meet, you know, it'd probably be smart to do so. Um, we'll learn a little bit more and we might have the same problems about how individual members feel, you know, for town meeting. But ultimately, the town's gonna vote on this, so that's how, you know.
I don't know where you, you, you've got a lot of information, Jeff. I'm, I'm, I don't know if you've been, where you've been leaning it from, but. But, you know, if you were to take a look and, and do the same thing you did before, bring, bring information to the, to us.
That's all.
Because, because I'm. Yeah, you know, the war, this seems to happen. How many, how many more towns signed up? How many didn't sign up? How many?
Dave, do you know the tally right now is today as?
It's over twenty-five, you know, right now.
So, and when we were in town meeting, there was only fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah, because there is a lot of, I think.
Right, so and then in October.
Hundred seventy-seven.
No, I understand that, but there are only thirty-something that have, have participated willingly, like thirty-three or something like that.
It's a small number, actually, but a lot of time, a lot of it is, people are doing like what we're doing. They're just waiting, I think. Like, we're not an outlier.
A lot of them have different dead dates too than ours. It's not that many that have the next.
Yeah, the ones that were.
So the, the, the bulk of the, um, the bulk of the, um.
Dead dates are.
Yeah, the, yeah, so. Right, and, and that's for the adjacent community and stuff. So we're all kind of in the same mix and what we're finding out, and I said at the, at town meeting, I said. What we're gonna find out is that when we come back again, we're gonna have some more numbers for you. So. So uneasy. Let's, let's just understand it because the people.
That council that was, that came, he was like, you guys should just hope this didn't not even mess with it. That's, he said, I don't, says, you know, that's what you should, that's what I.
So what, what I'm finding out, Warren, is that there's a difference between what the town wants and what the people want. There's a difference in that statement. Um, so the town sees through one lens, but yet the people see through another lens. You know, and we're here to, to work this thing out. And that's what we volunteered for and that's, you know, so, I mean, it's, it, it is not an easy thing.
Well, and the other, the other, the other thing, of course, is, is that this, the, the, the zoning changes that we need to make are so minor cuz we already, you know, we already got our zones. We already zoned all this area from that, so it's not like, uh.
Well, as far as that portion goes, I understand that, but it's, you have to. You know, and, and, and honestly, when, when we listen to a select board member who got up here and, and diminish the group here. And, cuz that's what he did. And, which I didn't think was fair. And then he put, he put fear in the people. If they don't do this. So my thought is, I don't really think he truly understands it either, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I see, I didn't say anything, you know, why? Cuz I'm willing to go forward with it. I'm willing to work with it and see what we got. I think you know better.
You know, I know, I know what the position is, but, but like when you have someone outside of this group and we, we smash this thing to death.
Yeah.
And we have, and we, we have one person outside of this just waving his arms around and telling everybody. Oh, well, we're gonna get fined and this and that. Well, wait a second now, if the people. Wanna forego this, that's for the people to decide again, you know, or if they don't, that's fine too. But, um, I, I just thought that was just an injustice to this group. I did.
Well, it's not the first, Dave.
Well, I know it, but that doesn't mean it's okay either, Warren.
But.
They tried to beat us up at town meeting before and I beat themself.
We'll, uh, we'll shake it off though and, you know.
What the next, um, group of situations is and see how it's all, all going. But the, the thing is that. In, in all these other towns, it's, it's, there's similar discussions going on, you know, and.
Oh, yeah.
And so, so that, so, uh, you're not gonna know till after December thirty-first and, and to see if anything actually happens.
Do we know?
But it's like waiting to see if the time bomb goes off or not.
I'll give, I'll give a good example and I, I don't know if anybody in the room has read why, cuz this, I don't know the reason why, but for one, one of the no votes is Wakefield. And you, you know, right when we leave, um, April and hop onto ninety-five, right in our face is the five hundred.
I saw that.
Development that's going on there right now. And it's beautiful, it's, it's gonna be on a lake, it's a great development. I wonder like, does, did that play into their no? Like, hey, we're in charge of our own destiny here. We're creating our, you know, we're creating our housing and we don't. Maybe have. Their, their timing must have been totally different, like Milton's, but there are no, there, yet there are no votes, so I don't quite get, there's gotta be a reason.
Walden voted no.
Yeah, so you're right, and they're on too.
And, and they're an MBT community, they're flat out straight up.
And I suspect a lot of it is because they're actually doing the work, they're doing the housing and they just, like, we don't need, you know, we don't need.
They said no. I just don't, I, I think it comes down to these towns just don't wanna be bullied and they don't want other, and then he's telling them what to do with this stuff and, and. And I get it. I get it. I mean, that's.
Well, to me, that's the, that's really the two sides. It's, it's the, this is the no-brainer. I just kind of said it in the meeting and then there's like, don't tread on me, right?
Black is thunder, sorry.
Sorry, it almost just comes down to those two arguments really, right?
Well, yeah, it's the fundamentals.
But what I mean is, the person that has the don't tread on me stance is per, is a rational person that totally can see that this is. Pretty much a no-brainer too. Like, you can be, you, you can hold both, that's, I think, you know, where I.
It's severe thunderstorm.
So coming in, okay.
Yeah, no, I agree, Dave. I'm saying, uh, and I get it.
So it's not like, you know how normally there's two sides and they're completely have different opinions, the, the person that's doing tread on me. Actually understands and totally accepts even that, that the site is completely complies and. It'd be easy and everything, yeah. So, but you're just going to a higher calling.
Well, because I think too.
That's what I think.
I've said it a million times, my concern is not about today. My concern about is if we leave something on the table for tomorrow. Both my kids live here, my grandkids live here, like, you know, my business is here. Our, we're not going, you know, we're gonna be in this community for a long time. Our family and our in-laws live here and I know, so there's a lot on the table and it's like, I'm not thinking about now that it's a great fit. Of course, it is a great fit. It fits perfect. I'm not thinking about that. I'm thinking about the idea of. Giving something away. You're giving it up, is what you're doing. You're giving it up is what you're doing if you vote.
And it's kind of ceremonial in a way, because you're really not giving anything away. We've already kind of done.
Well, right now you're not.
That's what I mean. Well, that's what I'm saying. You're not giving anything away. That's what I think scares me more. We're not really doing much for this. This, this hoodsy, you know, it, it, so seems weird. It's just like, hey, it's free, take it.
And again, I just, you know.
Well, we'll talk about it more. We won't believe it anymore tonight, but we'll talk about more.
Are we, but, yeah, are we?
Was it bad?
It's in red.
Oh, wow, crap. My dogs are gonna be shaking.
Yes, instead of normal dog, that was cowards. It's like, be bite.
This, this dog, this dog, nothing scares her.
So did you have a comment?
Process of scheduling. So, um, if we do want to submit those articles by the warrant closing date of the nineteenth. Um, we next meet August sixth and then after that the twentieth. Now, do you want to vote?
And I just, so that's a good, I'm glad you just brought that up. So I'm on vacation on the fourteenth, I think. So I think, um. Yeah, and I'm, I'm missed, I'm missed, I'm fourteenth through like the twenty-third or something. I'm gonna miss that meeting. So we would have to.
On the sixth.
Yeah, you know.
Do you wanna do the vote on the sixth? Do you wanna do it tonight? I just wanna make sure we, we have a quorum for our last opportunity.
You know, the, the, um. The hearing from the people would be good, but they're not coming. They don't really care. They're not coming.
But, but you know.
But, but Warren, but we, the problem is, is when you present it on the floor. If they're not coming, they don't have the information.
Right.
So that, and hear me out just for a second. We've decided to put it on the floor. We've decided to bring it to, bring it to October meeting. We, these people have zero input. We've offered, 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 offered. We represent them. They voted all of us in. Does it really need to go to the floor?
Oh, in other words, you think we should just be able to decide?
I do.
You can certainly vote to put it on the warrant and then.
Hang on, Danielle. Right, because think about it, Warren. What are we here for?
Yeah, I know. That we've been following for the last.
I understand that.
Is that we, we, we vote and we take it to town meeting and say, we wanna make, we need to make a zoning change. We need to change our, 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 uh. Our zoning bylaws to make.
So, so, so my fear is honestly, my fear is that if this isn't presented perfect. And there's another amendment on the floor for whatever reason, however this thing goes, wacky or wonky. Right? There it is. They voted for you, 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 me. They voted for us. They trusted us to make a decision. If you're not here, we can say, okay, Danielle, how many meetings did we have and what was our attendance? That's our argument. We, we have the ability to, to make the decision with.
I think my point about this all was that was, was Danielle, to Danielle's point, should we just, should we just vote tonight to put it on the? If we're gonna do it, should we just vote tonight to put it on the warrant?
Or wait until the sixth.
Now, let me, let me refinish. There's a reason, there's a method to the matters here. If we do that and it goes, makes it in the paper. Then maybe somebody could put it on as an agenda item in the next meeting and somebody might show up.
No, so the thing is though, Warren, that's not gonna work because we've already, we said, how many letters did we send out to, um? So.
Really impacted too, not like, you know.
Well, they have the most control.
Right, so, so my point is, Dave. My point is Danielle sent out over five hundred letters. And we were at town meeting, nobody even knew what the hell we were talking about. No one knew. Even the select board didn't know. Even the select board. Forgive me. Well, well, they know, but they're more informed than, than, than.
Yeah, no, they totally are.
We've done, we have done, here it is again, and we can put this on the agenda every single night that we meet. Till the end of the year, if, if that's what it takes and we'll still see this. And you know what that tells me? That we should make the decision.
You mean to vote to put it on the warrant?
Well, we gotta put it on.
So, so what I'm saying is Danielle, is. It, it's a little confusing because if, if we offer out and we, this is how, how many, this is what our fifth meeting? Or, or, oh, more. Right, so, and we had the meeting, we even met with the select board. And we've had, we've invited the public out, we've sent out tons and tons of letters, we've had notices in the paper. We've done everything we can to notify the public. The public has not responded. It's our duty to make a decision. And what I mean by make a decision, what I mean by make a decision is, does this even have to go on the October warrant?
Well, does now, because I think.
So can I get the language? Can I get the language?
Yeah, I mean.
The actual language as written.
Yeah.
Dave, as written.
Yeah.
That was on site that night. Because.
Well, I took it out of my, because it wasn't relevant to tonight.
So did you give that to town, town council?
Yeah, they, they, yeah, they have, actually it was the moderator that took the copy, but I have, you know, my, my copy too, so.
So as, as amended, the copy?
As amended.
Okay, and as, so, eh, well, as amended and as written, because. To make sure that they coincide and they are the same exact thing. Because we shouldn't make any decision until we see that and know exactly what that says.
Right, and I think you mentioned that to Danielle at the beginning, so I think you're gonna look into, yeah, and I can look to, but, um. But back to, I think, what, I mean, just to play devil's advocate too, some of the reason why maybe people aren't showing up is because they're, they think it's such a no-brainer. Why do I need to? Like, go, I'm, I'm already made up my mind too, like, it's a yes, because this is such a no-brainer. So, you gotta look at it both ways. Not everyone that's gonna show up is. Is, you know, gonna be, I guess, in a way, you know.
I, I think, I think it's hard for them to. I, there's not enough meat, there's nothing for them to really get their teeth into. It's just a zoning thing. And so they just, they're also, so what? You know, I think that's the thing.
But to Jess's point, so they don't understand the nuance of it, so the, the commission here is the one that was elected to know the nuance.
Right, so we decide, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I think, it still comes back to Jeff. It's, I, this is, I think, because we've been, you know, thanks to, to. Uh, Mr. O'Larry, but I think I also made the promise too, so my name's on the line too, because I said we're gonna bring it back in October, so. There's kind of a double thing here, but I don't have a fault, a po- problem bringing it back. I just think it could follow the same course where. This board majority, you know, say, uh, feel, still feel strongly against voting for this thing. That's the case that will be made at that meeting and then it goes to the floor for the vote.
So, so one other thing too that came to my mind, I would, I mean, tell me what you think, Dave. The, the finance committee, um, voted also in favor to pass over and then they had to go back.
That was a wacky one. I don't know.
They didn't understand the.
Made more sense.
So.
I mean, they don't care. They just kind of, they, they, they don't, it's not their bailiwick.
They don't care. I mean, Danielle said call me and have them.
If, if we could, um, and I don't know whether this makes sense or not, but on this topic, the finance committee voted unanimously, I believe. To, um, pass over and then they.
That's because we asked them to.
Well, I understand that. But the problem is, they went back to the table and then they unanimously recommended. Right? And I think the finance committee looks at this in a different light than, than we do because they're only about numbers only.
Yeah, I agree.
So if they look at numbers only and they're not, again, listening to the people, they're just looking numbers only. I think maybe we should meet with the finance committee too. I would like to before October. Because I'm not sure that they have a clear understanding. I think they're just looking at pluses and minuses and they're weighing that scale because they're financed.
But that's okay, but that's, you know, because that's their expertise, that's what they care about. That's their interest, so I don't know.
They're gonna say, well, what, what are you gonna say? Just want to say, what do you think? Because I've already talked to Abby about this. She's like, go, well, what do you think?
Yeah, and I don't know. Convince the, you know, FinCom to change their mind or something like that, you know, or. What you're saying is there's.
A lot of confusion with them as well.
They wouldn't, they don't, if they don't see a financial, a clear, defined financial downside to it. Or upside, depending upon what it is. They, they're not gonna, they're just gonna say, we have no, we have no opinion of it.
Yeah, see, they, they're, they, I'm, I'm just, I'm assuming, but they're, they see, they see downside because of the potential risk of losing some. Grants and things like that. They don't, and maybe they shouldn't. Is, that's not what they do. They're not evaluating the, um, the, they're not evaluating the psyche of the, of the resident that says.
So it's just the town. They work for the town.
Right, but what I'm saying is they're not looking at it like us, Jeff, and saying, wait, that, I can say bye-bye to the state. That represents a hundred dollars more on my taxes. I'll take that. I don't want it. See, that's not their job to do that. You know, so that, that's why I don't think you're gonna sway FinCom because. They're understandably concerned about loss of revenue, you know, from grants, whereas it takes the.
That's what I mean, is there potential loss of revenue beyond just what happens today? So like.
Well, not with, I don't think with that property, but with future properties, yeah, maybe.
Well, so, so that's what, so the thing is, like, once you give it up and you give it up. And, and, and overlay, and some of the overlay stuff that I've seen in Cambridge is horrifying, what they're doing. And I'm like, oh my God, if they ever did that here, I'd be, it's frightening. You know, some of those buildings that they've gone in and the developers have emptied out. That were all full of apartments, they've emptied them out, gutted them, shelved them, and turned, you know, uh, sixteen bedrooms into fifty. And that's, those are real numbers. That's a real, that's a real fact, real numbers. All the permitting shows, all this, all that design and layout shows what they've done. They've taken something with sixteen bedrooms and turned it into a fifty-bedroom legally. So what happens when you do that? Then the FinCom is gonna be going, oh my God, we just added thirty kids to the school system. And instead of having seven, we now have, and that is about, that's about tomorrow. It's not about today. That's about tomorrow. So FinCom's gonna have a really, really big problem if they don't understand. The overlay stuff and how it can work. Granted, will it work? I have no idea, but can it? Yes, it can, because it's happening.
Alright, so you're saying it'd be good to have a meeting just so.
FinCom needs to see the future because they're only looking at a hard number now going, alright, two million. Uh, yeah, mass for X and two hundred thousand, and they go, okay, two point two million since two thousand fifteen divided by fifty-eight hundred houses. Over the last twelve years, it's six dollars a house. What a month for the, you know, the breakdown is, is minimal.
Yeah.
Compared to, hey, we just did this one building. Hey, but in this one building, we just went from sixteen bedrooms to fifty. Sixteen bedrooms, you might have had seven students. Fifty bedrooms, you probably have thirty.
Yeah.
That's an old way. That's scary. So, just saying, they're doing it. They're emptying out buildings.
Yeah, if, if it makes you feel better too, I mean, I'm going for, if you wanna have that meeting, you know, we could. Ask for, we would come to them, maybe, I don't know, you know, we just go to one of their meetings and have fifteen minutes or whatever on their agenda.
Really, really do they have meetings at nighttime?
Yeah, so.
Meetings are all at five o'clock, three o'clock. I know, because I'm on some of those committees and it's meeting, what's your name?
I mean, I just think.
I don't wanna take that off the table though, I mean, for you, I mean.
I just think it's one more base to cover, uh, because when they said, oh yeah, we, the past, and they came back and they recommended, I'm like, okay. I haven't talked to any of those guys. Maybe you have, Warren, maybe Abby, because you've known her for so long. You know, and is your friendship and all that stuff, but overall, I don't think that, I, I certainly haven't. And they need to know that it's just not about today. If you're gonna vote, yes. There's possibilities of other things that can happen. And they need to know, and that will have.
There are possibilities of other things that can happen.
It can, I know, it can, it can. But at least.
We have real threats on the negative stuff and no real threats on the positive.
So, I guess the big question is, um, Danielle's trying to get to the essence is, are we, are we sure we can be here on the sixth? Um, August sixth. I mean, I know I can. Um, I can't speak for anyone else, so.
I have a trip coming, I have a trip coming up to Atlanta. I gotta go down to Atlanta.
Is it around then?
I, I haven't solidified it. I've, I've been working with these guys. I'm supposed to visit a factory down there and go to a tour. Crazy stuff, and they said the first week of August, I don't know what days they're gonna, they're paying for the whole trip.
Let's just do it for the sixth and then we can, we'll, we'll do a lateral and figure it out.
Yeah, I'll get the exact wording of the motion from the court. We'll give you the stamped copy. We can see exactly what was said and.
I almost wanna get this just behind us because to me, it's just, and so again, I'd be open to voting on it tonight. Because it's, it's, you know, but.
Because we told them we'd do it at town meeting.
Well, well, it's not like, just like with the M T A thing, the deadline's not tonight, but at the same rate, we get vacations and we are a horn right now, so there is some. You know, it's summer, so there's some positives to just voting tonight because we're not gonna get around getting it on the warrant. But again, after that point, the same kind of things can follow that, that led up to the June one and everyone can vote their conscience and. Whatever. So.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna vote on it unless I see that documentation.
That's fair, that's fair. Okay, so we'll, we'll keep it on the sixth then. And, yeah, that's fair job.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and then our last one. Um, and I feel like, you know, it's tough in the summer and, you know, everyone wants to get out of here, get struck by lightning, um, but.
I'm out of gas. I'm gonna be at the, at the, like, please.
If I can make a suggestion, just, just as it shared, no, I love it, I love it. I'm with it. Um, is on the, uh, the. Our work plan, call it, as it's called. If you wanted just quickly, we'll just take ten minutes, couple of things that you're, you'd like to. Think about, and so this is in no way a comprehensive discussion on it. We'll definitely put it on the agenda again, I think, and build up to it. We should try to like. By the end of summer into Labor Day, have just a cogent kind of list of ideas, but Jeff, start with you. What are some of the things that you wanna try to add? Uh, to our, our to-do list, like, what do you wanna?
Well, I'll tell you, did you, I don't know. I took photos, I went up, up Main Street and I took photos of all of, remember we talked about.
I mean, not the trash, the clothing ones, yeah. I forwarded one to Danielle. It seems to be the only real offender. It's the one that's literally right off the street. Whereas the other ones are kind of back a little bit.
So, yeah, that's, and, and, and I also noticed too, um, the, um, like, just. There's some dumpsters up front. There's, it just looks crappy. Main Street just looks so crappy. It was better when we had two bowling alleys. No. No, um, it looks way better now than it did when I first got here. It's true. Um, but just those little things drive me crazy. You know, you see like, the Honda guy right across the street, every morning I pull out. There's like pallets piled up. There's just all this crap thrown in piles near the dumpsters and everything's out front. Why's it gotta be out front? You know, anybody cuts through North Reading, goes down Main Street, it's like, wow, what a dump, North Reading. They go through the nice wooded area in Reading and then they pop into here or they come through the business. And.
So, so on that, so Danielle shared a lot, she took the time to look at. So we don't have any kind of bylaws or anything on those. So again, we're not gonna go way into it tonight, but that should be on, on, I think, on the list. It's, these are the little small steps that make. Main Street better, but we should just come up with something simple that stipulates they need to be in the side and they probably need to be like kept. Like, clean, like, no clothing or articles should be on the outside of receptacle, like, at that point. You know, you're kind of in violation, you know, at that point.
It just looks so bad.
But either way, like, I do, I do get like, that's a little tiny, tiny thing that is you're cruising up. Twenty-eight, you see a bin just pouring with clothes, that's a bad look. And I don't want, if we can get rid of that through just bylaw, I think that'd be smart. So that's one.
Don't get, just move them back, get them off the main road.
What's another one? Any, anyone just?
Other dumpsters too.
Warren?
Um, you know, subdivision control laws. Um, where we require that the rate of runoff, we should, uh. Somehow put in a requirement for volume. Because that's in a pet peeve of mine for.
No one ever answers you on that. Ever, ever.
I've been asking for twenty years.
I was gonna make a T-shirt that said that, volume, you know, it shows more fears on the back. Not great.
But that's, that's one of the things that I, I've been thinking about that I would like to see us put a little adding to.
Yes, I totally agree. I'm gonna also put in the general, I know it's going on forever, but that stormwater related stuff with the subdivision regs and the cycle interview. Once we get a good conversation going with Dan and we have some really good information from the consultants that helped us. Once we get a good conversation going with Dan and we have some really good information from the consultants that helped us, I think we can really, this year, definitely target.
That's a good one, Warren, I like that one a lot, okay. Max, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to look some more at affordability, so look at, uh, I'd just like to look at ADUs and actually. Dive down that and see if there's any possibilities there in the community.
Okay.
Got it?
Anything else, guys? Just, again, this is a quick.
I get a lot of calls about um, Central Street sidewalk, um, which I think that would be a really good one to do.
And it hits the spine right down the. To connect to the park, I mean, it really is. A pretty important one, and I know it's a bitch, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep those lights there, right?
So I have to look, but I don't even remember off the top of my, yes, there will have to be lights there, a lot of trees will have to go, but that's, they may have a public meeting about it. Yeah.
Oh, I know, that's just, yeah.
You hate to know you love it.
Good time, right?
So. Good days, bad days.
Yeah, depends time of day too.
Well, I know one, like, cause we were always up and down, running around all over the place and. It's seems to be not as a violent place to be.
Well, well, I think if there's a key to it, it would be the timing of that light to the one by the high school. If the ti- if the timing between those was set up, because. People to try to get out of the driveways or any, any, anything along that road there, uh, can't. Could, but can now, because at certain times of day, cause my office right there.
So you watch.
Times of day, you couldn't, I I don't even, I don't even plan on trying to go anywhere, I don't care what I gotta do, I don't, I'm not gonna, because the the line of traffic. Before the lights were there, was all the way back and it would just sit there, with the light, keep getting a break. Keep getting a break, keep getting a break and you can get out.
Yeah.
And I lived that every day, so.
Oh, wow.
So I know that it's a, that it has helped.
When I was, um. One time I was coming across and I'm like, look in this way, I it was, it's like whack a mole, it was like whack a mole.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
I like the lights, I mean, I mean, I I don't like light having to have the lights here, but I like the fact that they are, I think they make it safer.
I am too, no, it's a little crazy sometimes.
I'll keep them though.
I have another suggestion, um, so quite a while ago, uh, the town asked for and received a a very small. Technical assistance grant to look at the possibility of us becoming a green community. Green community.
Oh, green.
Um, just to look at what it would take to go through the designation process and then when we get to the end of that project, kind of an evaluation of, um. Would the town like to propose it or not?
Yeah, we'll do rain, rain, we'll put rain gardens in the streets and there.
No, it'd be more like, um, energy efficiency. And then we would be eligible for energy efficiency related grants, like for things like our vehicles and our.
Were you, are you advocating for a stretch? Is that what you're advocating?
No, I'm not advocating for it, it's more like the green communities. Thing is out there and kind of by default, I've been just sort of handling it, cause we have a grant.
And it's a difference between stretch and green.
The stretch code would be part of being common and green.
Okay.
So.
I'm I'm, I'm just personally, cause I'm so.
I'm a no.
I'm a no, and I'll tell you, the the only reason why is it, it puts a lot of, it's a huge cost now and because of the new. Um, the twenty twenty one, um, E I C C, they, you have to do blow door tests, ductwork ceiling, all this kind of stuff has to be done. That it's adding at least on our projects, at least twenty three thousand dollars to the projects. Um, you have to hire outside consultants to do all that stuff, and I just think that. Like, sometimes government doesn't let market take care of it and the building, building technology is so good. Now, I mean, just think about when you drive by town, anything, you see the zip walls, the green, that's an integrated kind of membrane. You know, um, A V B in in the wall, and all the materials are becoming better, so. Homes are becoming so much more efficient, cause it's just easy to build them that way, and that's no pressure. You know, from government, a lot of times that material that everybody.
So, so, yeah.
Because we live in New England and everything, when you make those houses so damn tight, radon sticks around in the basements.
Yeah, so we're now.
Systems and all that crap and.
Yeah, we put those passive systems in every house now and you have to, because just like Warren said, you know, that's what happens is now that used to just dissipate. But now it you're sealed in now.
In the last few years, every time we put a foundation and we're putting up, we're putting the piping in.
Yeah, you put the piping and then they make you test it, makes you test it, or you just. And then it always comes up, a lot of times.
It it really handcuffs.
Fan in the unit, and and again, that adds cost, but usually, you know, your site guy kind of takes care of that and and only if it does fail.
Fan if you get a high vent or low vent.
Basically saying we would be unlikely to support the town becoming a green community.
For for those reasons, it's not like wanting, it's not like we're not wanting to be green and. Everything I try to do in my life is, you know, recycling and everything and drive a little car and all this kind of stuff, but it's just. What I've seen is it just adds cost. A big fan, but that's your work, but I I I just think that, when you look closer into it, and Jerry and I talk about all all the time, it's. And it can live, it can really hurt, uh, um, development of commercial projects and stuff, it can be such a bite. On that budget that that makes them like, cause right now in our town, other towns, they throw in you, because if you start following that. You have to be, as we're kind of doing on that fire station design, solar ready, all that's caused. Um, you have to have E V parking in the front, all these things, and sometimes it's like, they don't apply to to certain types of. Commercial development or uses and yet they make you do it, and so I'd rather be. As playing board, say, I'd like to see, you know, two E V parking spots and just, it's us doing that versus these mandated things.
I mean, I guess I want me bring it up because, um, if there is a grant program that's just getting started, is it better? Would would the recommendation be instead of me spending the the next few months working with the consultant to. Figure out whether we would wanna be green community, would you prefer that I step away from that project and either let a different department handle it? Or tell them we're not interested? I mean, I I I know that.
I would. I mean, that's just my opinion, because I'd rather have a spend on something that's not gonna cost all the residents more money to bill.
Yeah, it it just, it's so, the costs and. And also too, Dave, what I found out, um, I was talking with a few, a couple inspectors. When you have a community that is not, um, governed like that.
Yeah.
It gives the builders a lot more flexibility to 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 offer more to the consumer.
Right.
That in some communities, like you build a house in Concord and you've built a house in North Reading, you have way more flexibility because we're not a stretch. Or a super stretch now, whatever they call the new one.
Enhanced.
Yeah, enhanced, yes.
And in last August.
So it it allows our, like, anybody who comes in our community a lot more options, so like if. You know, whoever is building or custom building or whatever they're doing, the homes or the builder itself. Gives them so much more flexibility to do different things, whereas under those regulations, they're really governed and it's it's. It just creates a lot of trouble.
To give some context too, when the first stretch came out, it was a fifteen percent improvement over E I C C two thousand fifteen. So you're saying, oh, that's not a big deal.
Everybody bid on that.
And it wasn't a big deal.
Yeah.
To go do that. Now, the new one, which is off the twenty twenty one. Is almost a sixty percent, it depends if you're commercial or resi, but it's a huge chunk.
Yeah.
So the efficiency is like crazy, um, it it meaning crazy expensive.
Yeah, the zero loss stuff is just so expensive.
Said is a really good point, what's happening in the residential world is because of the requirements I mentioned with the duct ceiling. Um, the the door test and all that stuff, what the developers or resi, they're just putting in heat pumps. So picture in our climate, it's just what you've seen them all, we have, you know, those A C type air handlers. They have the cassette type units too that go on the ceiling, but it's a residential house, every bedroom has one of those kind of, um, blowers. You have a big stack of heat pumps outside.
Yeah.
The electric bills like a thousand dollars a month, there's no, they they're not great in the winter. Um, there's no ducted air, it's all, it's literally all heat pumps.
Yeah, because.
In a, in a tight house. But Jeff, they do that, cause they can't afford a ducted system, the builder, so they, they, the code makes them go to the crapper solution.
Yeah.
And I like heat pumps, again, for for a lot of things, but.
Sure, I do too.
In our climate, they can be problematic if you don't have a secondary source, so either way, like, it just forces all, so all the, everyone's. The builders are just going and having to choose that.
Global warming.
It's, yeah.
Not gonna snow anymore.
That's true.
So the heat pumps will be just fine.
They'll be just fine, yeah, but, yeah, so.
But unfortunately, the zero, the testing they've done with all that heat pump stuff, cause we deal with it all every day.
Yeah.
They're doing that in, uh, um, uh, when they do all their testing and they come up with the the minus fifteen numbers and, oh, yeah, it's great, it's a zero loss house.
Yeah.
With, if you, you know, it's a hundred percent efficient, well, okay, who has a zero loss house? Supplemental, and they want you to eliminate, like, your main. We've had customers that do it, they go around and cut all their heating equipment out.
Yeah, you take the oil tank out.
Everything, well, I know, Warren, and and so the flexibility, if you go that way, it's just. I don't think it's a good idea for New England, I just don't, we run into it all the time, people with.
My brother and everything, and we put a heat pump system in it because they wanted two thousand dollars to bring a gas line in.
Right.
And they're, you know, and then he's like, in in the oil and it's just, he's like, I don't wanna do that, I said, well, put a heat pump system in. And with a little bit of, uh, base, electric baseboard backup, so. Worked good, works good.
Oh, I bet, it works good, it's probably kind of expensive.
Mitsubishi units are pretty good.
Right, we do them, yeah. They are, they're good, but it's a great supplemental to to solely rely and.
Anyplace you go now to a doctor's office and then such that they all have those units.
Yeah, yeah, well, even like the three family houses, they were all around, all the. Well, you go all over East Boston and Charleston and every, every single three families, a condo, condo, condo. They have heat pumps everywhere, and it says, that's great, but when your heat pump on the third floor dies and it's in January. And you gotta pull it off the wall, the disconnect is outside, they're all outside, why, right? How are you fixing that, Warren?
Right, but also.
So it's gonna be a lot of, it is a lot of trouble now.
Unless you have an energy recovery unit or something else, all you're doing is those units are just recirculating the same air. Same air, there's no cleaning of the air.
No.
So in that room, in a an A C unit, one of those type of units, you're getting better air on one of those through walls.
Yeah.
Than you are getting from a a condensing unit with, you know, with an air handler, you're just, all you're doing is.
So you're gonna love this one, buddy, so the wall hung units, um, you know, mini split unit, heat pump. So, um, I don't know if they patented yet, but Samsung's patenting, um, a, um, U V. U V light inside the unit.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, cause again, there's no.
Cause it, there's no recirculation, so they, they're, a lot of them have a ton of mold in them. Disgusting.
I I, even in my office, I have a small, uh, air purifier, it's got, it's got U V in it.
Yeah, you gotta.
But the the thing is, U V lights, the U V doesn't last all that long, it it still comes on, it still looks like it's doing the job, but. Only about two years you're out of it.
Yeah, you gotta replace them, but I mean, they work. And that's where the technology's going, they're gonna put them right inside the units, which is gonna help, cause we open up units that haven't been touched in two, three years. And and they're gross, they got mold all inside, disgusting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, sorry.
I just, my question is this, um, I think the reason, um, I had asked for the grant, this was a really long time ago and it's a small grant. Um, but of course, if we have no intention of doing green communities, I would tell them never mind, um, the reason I think was because it had been in one of the select word strategic plans all. Long time ago, and it was one of those like town hall things rather than a C P C thing. Would you have any objection if the town administrator's office knows like we're still wanted to do it, do you have any objection with my helping to coordinate it? Or do you really just not want any, and either way is totally fine, obviously would not be a C P C project, cause you're not interested, I also could like, just. Figure out how to unload this project and we don't do it, I, I don't know, I don't know what you're gonna wanna do.
I I just suggest you, you go to.
We'll give it to Maxwell to do.
Well, I suggest you go to Jerry and ask Jerry, and again, every building inspector I ask. Well, cause they're in the towns that have it, they just say it's the biggest nightmare, and again, it wasn't a nightmare when it was the fifteen cent, fifteen percent. But it gets to the point about this M V T A thing, it started as just a fifteen percent thing, and then they came back to all those communities. That bought into it and and to do fifteen percent, because it made sense, they came back and say it's not fifteen anymore, it's sixty five. And you're like, whoa, and again, sixty five percent more than.
That's huge.
Than than the present code, that's what that means.
Yeah.
It's so, in in, and again, if you're weighing it against two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty one, that's the most current code, so you're. It's even an improvement on the code, which already is more enhanced, and then you're having to do better than that, cause that's what, that's what stretch means, you're. Doing bit more than than just the code.
That thing is so problematic.
Nightmare, and I just, I like us being able to, same kind of thing, thing, make up our, we follow. Uh, best practice in construction, you give builders options, homeowners options.
Absolutely.
It 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 affects affordability of a home, it just, it's not, I don't think, I know. Cause I know the makeup of that select board, I don't think they understand what they want.
It might have been a a select word from three years ago, wanted to do it.
None of them are builders or designers.
So Dave, you don't.
I think we ignored it.
Okay.
We can be green in so many other ways.
So, so I think, I think what we can do too is, if Danielle, if this this hot potato gets thrown to someone else. I think even for us to be like, to give our opinion to them. And why? Because you're in the industry, I'm in the industry, actually, all of us.
I mean, I'll make it more formal if it ever does, I I can give a a lot more like succinct facts and exactly why. I'm throwing out just my experience right now, but trust me, I I could talk all day on this subject.
Yeah.
You know, I would just. You know.
Yeah, we'd never wanna limit the town and the ability.
Cause it's disappointing too, cause you would want it to be something that we do. But then you see what's done with it, and it's just like everything government does, they screw up, you know, they take a good idea and they screw it up. And I think this is a screw up, cause it's just a force feeding of something. One size fits all and it doesn't help people.
Right, I think the market will correct itself.
It's helping a whole new group of consultants that do modeling and stuff now.
Yeah.
It's it's started that whole, you know, that's a, and they have to be mass certified, pay their five hundred dollars, you know.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, and there's a whole list of them and they're cropped up now and, you know, so. So our verdict, our decision?
We're kicking the can.
Oh, so it was initiated by the recycling committee, they're the ones who contacted me and the town administrator had been, you know. It's been a discussion for, it it's been a town hall. Project, we did get this technical assistance grant, I we, I can either. Ask that somebody else manage it, or I can just recommend the town administrator that we back out of the grant and just not.
I would back out of it.
I would too.
I'll support that.
Happy to me with Mike and.
Yeah, that's fine.
Again, we become more prepared with facts and figures, but. Cause I think that's what people need to understand is what the the cost is, what it means to. And it's, it it, um, it applies to all renovations to a house, so every renovation Jerry would get. They'd get a big surprise, like right now, they don't even have to deal with it and the other towns are going. Holy smokes, I gotta do this, and I just thought it was adding on a bathroom or in like, and it turns into this whole thing.
Yeah, that also means we need more inspectors, so we need to hire another assistant.
Oh, definitely.
Or just taxes, you know, it's just taxes, Jerry's group.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine, I will back out of it, don't worry.
Thank you, Danielle.
Uh, but I I say we we end it for the night here, if everyone's cool with that, you know. We can, we can, but I think we should, we have, you know, four or five things here, we should, uh, just expand on them, we'll start, I wrote them down, I'm sure Danielle, they're their own minutes. We'll just start a list and then prioritize them.